I'd like to call to order the city of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Jamie Booth on the row.
Anderson.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Lindsay.
Here.
Peterson.
Stanton.
Here.
Someone make a motion to excuse Councilman Peterson?
I'll make a motion to excuse Chris Peterson from today's meeting.
I'll second.
Yes. Yes.
Any agenda changes? That takes us to public comment on agenda items only. Any of the three of you would like to make comments? Just come up to the podium and tell us who you are even though we know.
Hello. And where y'all? My name is Chris Clark. I live in Sagatuck Township at twenty-six, twelve, sixty-third Street. I've spoken to the council before about light pollution. I've been kind of active in this area for a while. I suggested to my friend Judy here that maybe it would be a good, it'd be cool to organize a dark sky event in conjunction with the new moon on October twenty-first. It seems like late in the year, but it's what's night about, nice about it is you don't have to stay up until midnight for it to be dark. And so what you see in front of you is our sort of rough plan of what we might like to do. It's a pretty low-key thing. We're gonna have, we've already lined up people who could come if we get approved to bring telescopes to help out. We're gonna show people if they want to learn how to take pictures of the night sky. There's, there's some neat citizen science projects that you can do and we're gonna help people learn how to do that. We'll have information to hand out. We can answer questions and so forth. And the hiking club's gonna do a night. We had planned to do a hike that night, so we'll just probably just walk down to the pier and back. And so, you know, our basic goal is just to help people understand what like light pollution means. And it's pretty dramatic when you're out there on Oval Beach. You can see the, the sky glow from, from Holland and you can see the, some from Sagatuck as well. So it's pretty hard to deny that it's, that it's something that's happening if you see it there. Yeah. Pretty much, we, we'd just like your approval to, to have, host this event. We're gonna shunt people to the left as they come into the parking lot so that everybody will be, will stay away from where we're gonna have the telescopes. You won't have cars lighting in there. We ask for some, to use some cones.
For deliberating, if you got questions, so if you're all there and we'll ask you a question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nancy or Judy either view with them. And also if I could be to on line, is that true?
That's correct, okay. Then we will move to the middle of the minutes. Somebody make an impression?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from September eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll suck it in.
Any comments or questions? Um, have you anything else?
Yes.
Hi, discussion items. Welcome Scott for being here with us. And you're on deck for the elevator.
Yeah, I, I didn't in no way pretend to be an elevator expert, so I, I, I learned quite a bit over the past couple of months about elevators and in our unit in particular. So, you know, the fir- first question was how long, how long has this elevator been here? You know, we have a paper trail that dates back to nineteen eighty-nine. But then I also asked the former Public Works Superintendent how, how old it was. He said, not, not that old. It was here when I first started in nineteen sixty-five, or it was not here when I first started in nineteen sixty-five. So that was kind of funny. But anyway, we had our Parks and Public Works Committee meeting back in July and we found out right before that meeting that the elevator was no longer operational. We had hoped that it was gonna be a simple fix, maybe a fuse, maybe the breaker that was tripped or something like that. So we did a pretty thorough scan of downstairs and even in the elevator shaft to see if there were any telltale signs of what the problem could be. Unfortunately, it wasn't that simple. So we had McNally elevator come out. They've been servicing our elevator and I believe from what I've been able to gather is that they actually installed the elevator for us. They've been servicing it for us ever since. And keeping us in compliance with it as well. So they were able to determine that it's the programmable logic controller or the PLC, which is somewhat kind of the brain of, of the mechanics of it. That controls like the, the hydraulic valve units and, and valves that move it up and down or the HPU. And, and it's, as I mentioned before, it's, it's quite old. And so unfortunately, replacement parts are not available. So we, we ended up, the staff got some quotes and after talking to some vendors and doing some research, we concluded that we needed to do, we need to replace the PLC and the, and the HPU and cable and some of the other pieces in there, which are outlined in those quotes. So got three quotes, one from McNally Elevator, one from Elevator Services LLC, and then one from All Access. Two of the three get, were able to give us quotes. It was highly advised. You know, I guess in the elevator world, there are companies out there that will sell you proprietary equipment, but then you're kind of married to that company for all maintenance, parts, so on and so forth. And so the general consensus was that we do not want to, to get proprietary parts. And so that's one of the benefits of going with McNally Elevator. They were able to offer us more universal pieces to get us back in operational again. So we are, staff is recommending to go with McNally just due to price, the working relationship with them. Their serviceability has been great. I've got no complaints working with them. They really know their, their profession inside and out, gives us a high degree of confidence. And then of course, because it's that non-proprietary equipment, it also makes sense to go with them. So their price came in, it's not cheap, forty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. I did put that in the sample motion, but kind of thinking that through a little bit more, I think we should probably tack on maybe like a ten percent amount to that just for some contingencies. So we don't have to revisit this again if it does go a little bit over. So I think on the, on the Monday meeting, if you guys decide to go forward with our recommenda- staff recommendation, then that, that new amount will be on there for forty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents. So that gets us back up and operational again. I'm sure, you know, Jamie, during elections, it's really important to get, to get folks up here and meet ADA compliance. And so, so just maybe a little stressful. But yeah, so you know, we, we would like to move forward with this and make sure that folks can attend or maintain that accessibility to our public meetings and, and open meetings act requirements. So for that reason, we're making that recommendation to go with McNally. And if you have any, any questions?
I'll kick things, I'll kick things off, Mayor. For, for you and Nicole's on the line. Any view from a budget standpoint? Does staff recommend just doing it all in one, in the, in the four-stage payments? So I'll put, I'll let both you and Nicole give a view if, if you want it, if you are suggesting all in one or staged payments.
Yeah, I, I think just to ensure, you know, standards are me, being met throughout the project, just given the amount, it does make sense. As I went through their payment schedule, it did make sense to me to kind of go with that instead of paying it all in one lump sum. As far as, this is an unbudgeted item, so unfortunately, we're gonna have to make a budget amendment for this.
Correct, right.
And is there, do they charge interest for the four payments versus one lump sum?
I didn't see that, an interest payment in there, no.
Nicole, do you have a view on staging it or all in one? She may not have heard me.
That's okay. I, I can circle back whether.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, your, your recommendations.
We'll talk.
Sorry, I had to figure out how to unmute. I, I would have to take a look at what the end result is gonna be before I can say whether we're gonna do one or the other. But I definitely have it in, on the plan to make a budget amendment in this next set.
Other questions?
Yeah, just a couple. So I'm a little, there must be something beyond the PLC repair, right? I mean.
Yeah, it's that HPU, it's the cable inside of it. And then a couple other miscellaneous pieces that were on here too. So it was the, yeah, the, the, the HPU, the travel cable and internal wiring, the installation of new doors and locks that helps us meet safety compliance. And then the final testing inspection. So the state, Lara, the state's licensing, regulatory affairs, they do an annual inspection of this and the work that they're doing will help keep us in compliance with that as well.
And for the, for the PLC code, is that, are they doing custom code or do they have like a pre-written piece of software that they'll upload into the particular PLC? I'm just curious. We may, they have it written. We'd obviously want that.
Yeah, definitely. I'll make a note of that. That's a good point. I'll, I'd have to check with them on that and make sure.
Okay. And I'm looking at the, the bill here. Is, am I not seeing, is, is anything here itemized?
Yeah, it is a lengthy invoice.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, we tried to break it down, a summary of it basically in that cover letter, just to have it a little more palatable for everybody, because it is a lengthy, a lengthy quote. So they, they talk about the configuration. You know, it's, it's not the most easy to read document.
Yeah, but.
Admittedly, yeah.
Right, right. Well, that's, that's, but I'd like to, I mean, if possible, I would like to see an itemized list.
Yeah, the same question in terms of what each component of this is going to cost.
Right.
For information.
It shouldn't be hard for them to do.
No.
Any other questions or for us?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Anderson. Good afternoon to everybody. So essentially what we're gonna get is a brand-new elevator lift. It's more of a lift rather than a person elevator, except for the car itself. The car's not being replaced. Everything that controls the car is being replaced.
Exactly.
Essentially.
Yeah, our, our, that's actually not even registered as an elevator. Like you said, it's a lift. It's a BL, barrier-free lifting device. So a BFLD. And, and that, that was part of the equation too, is like, are we just gonna, you know, there's, there's several benefits to just replacing what we have. There's a lot of components with that lifting device that are grandfathered in because of its age. If we, if we wanted to, we could also go with an actual registered elevator. So it's a Lula, which is limited, I haven't write it down. So limited use, limited application. But when you start getting into like a Lula elevator, a registered elevator, you have to start reconfiguring the shaft and we have to get, bring in architects and probably make the shaft bigger to house it. It was just gonna be far more expensive than if we just took advantage of those grandfather characteristics of that one and keep this one going.
Thank you. The scope of what's being proposed makes sense to me. Just so kind of set the expectation here, at least in my mind, is that, so there is gonna, there, there should be some work underway already on looking at city hall improvements, internal, you know, the internal portion of the building. And I don't know where we are in that. Of course, Ryan's not here today to, to, to give us an update. But what would that have an impact on this unit? I mean, the city hall is going to need something. Either it's just a replacement of this, or perhaps if there's a larger plan for the internal changes. So where I'm going with this is that we can spend forty thousand dollars and change, or we can wait until that plan is done. It may require a different lift. And we don't maybe perhaps know that. So I just, I don't want to, the old adverb of throwing good money, you know, you know, whatever.
That's, that's something.
Yeah.
So I will be heading city hall remodel and interior.
Oh, nice, great.
And I, we are gonna be working with Lisa and Vanderbrink and I have that out for John and Dave. And we're in the process right now of scheduling our first walkthrough and that's gonna be dictating what can be done with the interior, what's load-bearing. What does it look like for the elevator? I mean, that, that, that's conversation. Right?
Point, I, I think part of it is, you know, to say that we're, we're very early in that project phase. And I do think that we have some sort of an obligation just from an open meetings act and accessibility standpoint to move somewhat swiftly on this. Not to put pressure on anybody about that, but I, I do know that the state's expectation is that if we have an elevator that it's working and that if, if it's down for, for maintenance or whatever, that we are doing what we can to make sure that it's back and operational again.
And, and it, for as frequent as it gets used, I should say, throughout the year, I'm not sure. In my mind, I would probably relocate it and do a great big awesome elevator because my, for the elections, maybe three people use it, four people for meetings, handful of times throughout the year. So it's not something that people use frequently. So I'm not sure how much money I'd like to spend on that by moving it to the other corner. Or, you know, this might be the best location, but that is gonna be a, something I touch on with that initial walkthrough with F and B.
Part of our conversation with the remodeling of city hall too is potentially relocating the council chamber downstairs. We're very early on this and so I don't want to give a perception that that's.
Right.
By any means been decided.
Something.
But, but that's also further justification not to spend large sums on, on completely redoing this and making it a Lula type.
Because that is something, it's like, do we have meetings downstairs and then the clerk's office is down there? I mean, these are just ideas of, that we're early thinking of, what does, what does it look like here? And if that's the case, then the elevator's possibly just used for an occasional meeting with a department head that may be located on the second floor. But as of right now, it's not utilized a lot. So yes, it's an ADA necessity, but is it something that I feel like you need to spend a lot of money on and that? From a staff perspective?
We're not the only ones that are in this situation either. You know, McNally, they, they, they service a lot of different entities across the state in southwest Michigan. And, and, and a lot of places are, are moving forward with replacing out some of these old parts that are rated for, you know, twenty, thirty years. So.
Jamie, elections this year, are they gonna be at the women's club? Is this?
The November election, yes.
Okay.
I'm not confident that we'll have an elevator by then.
Right, that's why I asked, because I'm looking at the timeline right now and even if we were to approve it Monday, it still wouldn't be ready in time.
So that notice is already gone out to all supporters that it is changed for sure. Yes.
I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, and that's gonna be ran in the commercial record here too. I'm working with Julie on that, but it, it's definitely November's down at the women's club.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but it sounds like there was a control failure. PLC took a dive. Elevator's not working. They came in and they said, yep, you gotta replace that, but you also have to redo the hydraulic unit and the cable to really bring it up to where it needs to be, right?
Right.
So maybe you can ask the question also, is it possible? Because I think Council Gardiner has a great point. If it comes down to it, can we just replace the control system? Well, and buy us some time while we figure out the long-term plan for what we're doing here. And I know we'll probably pay a little bit more money, but it might be smart money depending on, you know, if the ultimate redesign goal moves the elevator or something and we have to replace the whole thing, it'd be, I don't want to throw all that money.
It, it makes sense. It makes sense to have just kind of a, at least an idea of, okay, what, what is the part that, that we need to get this thing back up and operational at minimal cost? And then kind of have a more of a overview of the system.
It'd be nice to know if we have that option.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Jamie, have you, staff or anyone talked about how that space is a little inconvenient for maybe some changes that you've been thinking about? Downstairs or anything like that? So the idea of moving the elevator has, I know, I know you're not starting the process, but nobody's really brought it up before or?
Okay. Honestly, it's just been lighthearted conversations about what we all feel like the workspace might look like and I kind of just really thrown away around ideas because we haven't had that initial walkthrough. So no, I really haven't dug deep in it. I, he, I'm, I'm opposite of most people. They're like, oh, we should do this and this. And I'm like, I need to talk to the architect and see what walls we can remove first before I start thinking of those things. So I don't want to get excited. But so, yeah, people are throwing around those ideas, but we'll see after. I don't know.
Would there, would there be room for a speaker so that we could have music on the elevator?
Elevator music? It's actually a Jeopardy question. What company moves two-point-four million people every day? And the answer is Otis.
Otis.
Oh. Technologies.
All right. Good for trivia night. Thank you. So I wasn't presupposing anything, just more of a question to, you know, we want to spend smartly. That's a great way to put it, Councilmember Clark. Then I'd love to see some options too. It sounds like that might be a possibility, but, but again, ultimately, we have to be safe. We have to have, provide the services that people expect when they come here. If they need to be able to re-brought up to the second floor. If something were to slow this down in some form or fashion, say part availability, it looks like based on the calendar, it's probably early November. Everything goes right, that's when it's gonna be in. Let's say something doesn't happen. Let's say that whatever, something we can anticipate happens and it doesn't go for another two, three months. Are we out of, is there any regulatory compliance issues that we have to deal with? Or is there gonna be someone knocking on your door saying, hey, when are you gonna get that fixed? Because you're out of compliance with ADA or, or state, whatever.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm the one that, that kind of deals with Wayne over at the state of Michigan and through Lara. And so I, I would just follow, follow up with him and make sure that he's aware that it's out of commission and that we're doing what we can to make repairs. So.
Yeah, just.
I can't imagine that they would, what's that?
We might want to touch base with Jake. I know that, I think Ryan had a conversation with him. Maybe he can chime in on this, because.
Yeah, we, we discussed it briefly and without, I mean, spending a ton of time getting into the ADA, the general consensus there is just, if you have an elevator used to provide ADA compliance, it should be repaired within a reasonable amount of time. My expectation is that the state is probably pretty understanding that elevators are complicated and expensive and a reasonable amount of time, you know, might vary from location to location. In terms of OMA compliance, because I know that was the other concern that was identified, I think the city is already probably doing a better job than, than most municipalities in providing alternative accommodations to people who, who can participate remotely in meetings via Zoom, via submitting public comments. So there's a lot of ways, you know, short of having sky, carrying people up the stairs for members of the public to, to engage in meetings and, and, and give public comment without having physical access to the space.
Thank you, Jake. So basically, if we're making our best effort to get it repaired, that's good and sufficient.
And we do for ADA compliance, if somebody does come to one of the boards and committee meetings and cannot make it upstairs, we have a computer set up downstairs so they can join virtual via Zoom. So we are trying to make the best accommodations for anyone that shows up in person as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks for looking at that and putting that, making sure that's set up ahead of time.
Be on Monday's agenda. That takes us to six P. The special event, Dark Sky Night at Oval Beach. Jamie on us. And I first thank you for whatever will be of Jamie on us.
Sure, yeah, Chris pretty much explained everything I was and more. So, um, so does this UCC, correct? Yes. And PPW have submitted an application for the Dark Sky Night at Oval Beach for Tuesday, October twenty-first. I included their application in your packet along with the map. From a safety standpoint, here, they are looking to use Oval Beach. The north side of the beach, they're looking to cone off here at the entrance. Public access to the north side to keep the light pollution down for the event. So they're looking to request the closure of the north beach for the event. But accessibility for anyone ADA that needs to get there, they will allow through. And then just have all the parking here in the south lot, which is about fifty spots, right?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. And then the event will be from eight PM to ten PM, which is in our allowed park hours. And so I've got.
Judy mentioned before the meeting, if for some, I mean, if this is wildly populated, popular and more than fifty-eight cars want to come, we'll make provisions to get the other cars parked. So.
This way, yeah.
I, yeah, I saw that fifty, anticipating around fifty. I, it seems to me there'd be a lot more than fifty showing up for that.
Any? You can go up to the microphone.
Not, not such a comment of concern, more of a comment of support. That I hear a lot of people where that's important to them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the people we've talked to so far, there is some interest here. So we're hoping we get more than fifty people. I think that would be great. But yeah, that was a question that Jamie asked and we'd be happy to move the cones if we need to and expand the planned parking. We'll just try to point them away from the telescopes.
Questions?
I don't foresee a whole lot of parking anyway, you know, from the regular public. So if you had to get more parking spots, I don't think that you'd have a problem with that anyway. So.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Anderson. And, and could you please introduce yourself? I don't think I know you.
Sure, yeah. My name is Judy Teal. I'm from seven-seven-two Manchester Drive in Sagatuck and I serve on the PPW committee.
Great, thank you. So when the people that are coming for the van are coming into the beach, they're gonna be directed to the left, correct? Mark at the north end of the beach and then they'll walk down towards the area by the concession stand for the actual event itself. So people that are coming in, and again, I don't think we could probably have a lot of people that are just going out there that time of the year anyway to go to the beach. It's pretty light traffic. When they come in, they'll be going to the right, the normal direction. And then others are gonna be have to turn the lights off. Will be someone there to maybe let them know that there's gonna be people there when they would normally expect to see people there? Just thinking through some of the logistics out there.
I mean, I think we'll, as the people who will be setting up and some of the volunteers will be there early enough, I think, that we can certainly address any questions or logistics that come up.
And we have not had a safety meeting yet. So initially, this will be contingent on a safety meeting with fire, police and DPW. And those are typically the things we go over, the logistics of, yeah, we will ask them to have a volunteer there. Somebody needs to dra- you know, direct traffic. And so those little things we'll hash out, we haven't talked about yet.
Great. I, I think this is gonna be fun. I look, I look forward to being able to attend. I think my wife will as well. She's very supportive of Dark Sky Concepts and so forth. The, I did notice in the application, it said that the, asked if the restrooms could be open. And then I know in the notes that presumably Chris gave us, it said, restrooms will not be available.
That's, yeah, we're aware of that. We had that conversation after the application was submitted and we think that's fine.
Okay. All right. Well, I look forward to it. I hope it's a well-attended event and anything we can do to publicize it. It's cool.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anything else on that?
Judy, thanks for your efforts on all of this and Chris and everybody for all of your efforts putting this together because I think it will be a really perfect timing to do this sort of thing. So really appreciate all your efforts.
Can't imagine what the deer are gonna think. They have their own little world and then all of a sudden, there's gonna be all these people.
Red flashlights coming their way.
Yeah.
All right. That's it for discussion items. That takes us to public comments. Again, you can comment on anything. Either of you would like to make another comment?
Thanks, Chris.
We'll close public comments and go to council comments. Rush, you master.
Sure, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So I don't, I think Gregor is probably gonna mention this, but the Sagatuck Film Festival is coming up on September twenty-seventh at Sagatuck Women's Club in Legion Hall. Logan White and friends are again sponsoring this and they think this is their third year. I, he was on your show on Sunday and heard a little bit about it. So and I saw Logan on Sunday. So pretty exciting event. It's, in his third year, it's pretty cool. I have a serious safety issue that I will be bringing up at the council meeting on Monday too. And it was, and it's in regards to Holland Street. And most of us have traveled to Holland Street on a regular basis. And, and interestingly enough, when I took the master plan survey, there was a question there regarding bike lanes into the city or something to that effect, which I've mentioned several times at council meetings, is something that the city absolutely needs. We have a very urgent safety issue on Holland Street, particularly with bikes coming down the sidewalk on Holland Street. I have had several neighbors, I've had the personal experience, my wife has had the personal experience of bikes coming down the sidewalk, e-bikes, regular bikes, kids, adults, you name it, come screaming down that sidewalk. And it's, 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 it's a, I don't want to call it a battle, but I tell you, it's bike against man out there. And we need to do something immediately to address this. And I don't know if it's signage, I would fully support putting a bike lane on the road. There's enough space there. I've measured it. Another couple of cyclists that lived near Holland Street who saw me last night and bent my ear for about fifteen minutes on an encounter they had yesterday with the biker who basically got into a shouting match with a couple of citizens. I've been flipped off. I have been yelled at. My dogs have been startled. It's, it's, someone's gonna get hurt. And especially during the summertime, there's a lot of people that walk to the southern. It's a very popular destination. They, there's a lot of people going down that street with strollers and kids. I am shocked. No one's been hurt. I am shocked. So I'm gonna make this an urgent issue. I know the master plan survey had a question. We'll see how that comes out. But we need to address this now before it results in a, in a real problem for the city and for someone getting injured, seriously injured. So I just wanted to put that out there and I'll be making comment at Monday night's meeting as well. Also too, for the October, and I'll be emailing the city manager on this, for the October eighth workshop agenda request. Also too, for the October, and I'll be emailing the city manager on this, for the October eighth workshop agenda request, I've asked for this, I'm going to formalize it. At the October eighth workshop agenda, I'd like to have this item added to twenty twenty-five Oval Beach operations and financial debrief with Superintendent Herbert, Linda Boltman, who was our Oval Beach manager this summer, as well as Nicole Braydaway, our treasurer, to give us an update on how operations went this summer and a financial report.
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor.
I agree with Councilman Gardner, that is a very dangerous spot, and it's dangerous for the cyclists as well as the pedestrians. The Southern is a, you know, a very busy place, and you know, people go at quite great speed, even if they're not on the sidewalk down, down that section of Holland Street, and you have to be very careful about vehicles coming in and out of the Southern, which is a very popular place. So I would be a hundred percent supportive of measures to make that safer for pedestrians and cyclists along that stretch. Thank you.
I have to agree with Councilman Gardner, as well as Councilman Dean, that I would like to see a bike path. Actually, I've always wanted to see that bike path continued from, what is it, one thirty-fourth where it stops? It would be nice to see that and make that more of a priority for us. So I'd like to say that. And real quick, I'll give more updates on Monday, but if you remember, last month, I updated that Interurban had a record of all time in July of carrying over fifteen thousand six hundred riders. Well, now we have, we beat that record for August ever, any month that we've been in operation for forty-five years. Last month, we carried six thousand three hundred and fifty-two riders. We are really growing and expanding, and so, so just wanted to put that out there. We had our meeting yesterday, but I will save all of my updates for our meeting on Monday.
Well done, council. Yeah. I agree too with the, as far as the safety issue, getting that on the fast track to talk about it. And honestly, I think we should expand it a little bit, so we're not just as focused on, just focused on Holland Street. I think we have some hotspots around town where we see, you know, vehicular traffic exceeding the speed consistently. We've heard it from the public, I've heard it from neighbors up and down Francis Street, we hear about it on Elegant Street. So if we're going to really talk about hotspots and where we have safety issues, I think we should kind of include that in the discussion as well. But for sure, thanks for bringing it up. So.
Great, cards, we all have cards. Those great Sisters in Ink gave us a great printing, they gave us extra.
So we, we sent out fourteen hundred of these to every owner, property owner. We also sent an email blast out to every business owner. These are for you to hand out, we have more, we ordered fourteen hundred from Sisters in Ink, and for the same price, they gave us twenty-five hundred, so we have extra. We're putting them around town, and if you need more, they'll be downstairs, just for people to promote the master plan survey and open.
I'm a wallpaper in my bedroom, what's on you?
I got a letter or email this morning from somebody about Holland, so I did forward that on to my, and he's got that. And Russ, I can't remember if it's his first workshop in October or this second shot in October, we've got about a little beach, so.
Looking forward to it, it's a good time for a conversation for it.
And with that, I don't think we really have anything else, who wants to make an objection to a jury?
Question, new jury.
A second.
They were saying yes.
Yeah.